Is there any questions?
I think emotionally prudent.
Second.
Rule call.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the transfer of the police revenue in general fund of police money.
Helen?
For a second.
Second.
Rule call.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the police fund monthly transfer of $7,100.
Yes.
Second.
Rule call.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the main office transfer. So, for a second.
Second.
Rule call.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Jeff Cogan. The word is yours.
Given you all concrete this, ideally this isn't an issue. If we want to show up and oppose him at this, oppose the tax at this hearing, I'd be glad, happy to have, have you there. But I think you need at least be aware and read this over. They do not have to have a hearing to pass this tax. It has been an issue three of the last four years. Every time I oppose it, I take a hit for being against economic development, but it has always been at a 3% level, which puts us higher than Richmond. It puts us higher than Oxford. It's Houston Woods, higher than Oxford. And when I saw this on the agenda at the county level, I called that morning because I was busy and I couldn't get to the meeting. It was on May 4th when Shonda Coombs showed up. And I said, you know, if you only went 2%, we would at least mask them. But they still have more restaurants, movie theaters, and everything else. When you go to 3%, full 3%, we are at a disadvantage. She wants the full 3%, which brings me here because, you know, I went in on the night and I spoke to them and Dave asked me what would I open? You know, I said, I'd rather not have any, but definitely not more than 12% or 2% because we're already collecting 3%, which puts us at a 10% sales tax that we have to collect on our customers. What brings me down here is there is no current tax on the campground because it's in the village. If they levy this tax, the reason it affects New Parish is it will be levying on those cabins, the same as it would be down in Houston Woods. As she said, those cabins in Butler County, but I talked to John Wright down there in Israel, and those cabins are in Israel Township. But as far as New Parish, you know, ideally, they are better off without this tax. But if this tax is collected, they are going to use it, and she told me she should have got, they plan to use it to promote Derby Days and stuff like that. Now Derby Days, I've been here 31 years now, and it's never taken off. Things that are, have done whole volunteers and stuff like the Pork Fest, they've never needed this tax to succeed. But it's something you need to be aware of because they don't really need to levy, or don't need to hold this hearing. They're going to hold a hearing, but they can levy this at any time. So even if it gets turned down now, there's nothing to stop them one month down the road from just deciding to levy the tax and you guys are left holding the bat. If they levy it, it goes to the whole county. If you levy it, you can pick your own convention and visitor's bureau. It does not have to be the county one, which this money would be funded. I do a website called citizensforpebblecounty.com. The last six months of audio, well, actually I have four years, but I keep the last six months generally up there. And you can listen to these commission meetings. I've got the last four videos of your meetings up there. But review that stuff. Just don't take my word for it. Check, check the LRC, go to CCAO, then read these things yourself. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. And they've never mentioned, I know four years ago when it came to the township, they wanted to be named the convention, the OGDC wanted to be named the Convention and Visitors' Bureau. They never said anything about you could name or create your own convention and visitors' Bureau. I spoke to Jacob Evans today. Butler County has their own convention and visitors' bureau. So does Oxford. There can be multiple convention and visitors' bureaus for more dedicated use, local use of those funds. You could just name the chamber, or any other organization for that matter, but the chamber is probably more ideally suited for having taken out the billboard out there. He recommended that if you do, that the chamber set up a separate one. And you don't have to, but they should set up a separate nonprofit in case anyone says, well, let's just go into the chambers. It's supposed to be used to bring in more guests, more tours to the area. It's not, the first 3%, if you were to enact the first 3%, you guys could do anything you want with it, number 08. That's what the township collects. They can do whatever they want, or they finally decided to pay for half the billboard. But if you go with 09, half of that has to go to, at least half of that has to go to tourism. You can bring in more people to go to the antique mall or the snow tubing and golfing, any of that type of thing. Ideally, there's no tax. But if there's going to be a tax, my feeling at least is it should stay in community with that. Because what you have currently, if this passes, the only representation on that Purple County Development Board is from the West Alley, Lewisburg, Eaton area, from Camden all the way through here. There's nothing on the western half of this county. The, on May 4th, when Shonda was in there, Jeff Stewart, the village chairman of Lewisburg, said they were going to endorse both the license tax and this tax on the May 17 conference call. So they are already behind us, but they have nothing, nothing that's going to be, no businesses that are going to be impacted by collecting this tax. I spoke to the people in Israel. I'm coming here and I'll go next week to the township. But that's, you know, I don't live here. I don't, I, you know, I got out of paying the real taxes, I live in a county, but it's something you need to be aware of. And I can't tell you what to do, but I want you to know what the options are as I see them that are out there. And that's pretty much all I have to say. If you have any questions that I can answer, I'm happy to answer them.
You said Israel and Oxford has, they take in a certain amount.
Butler County has a, Butler County, where Oxford is, they collect bed tax. Oxford collects a tax and puts them at 12 and a half percent. Oxford has their own convention and visitors' bureau. Butler County has a separate one. There's other places in the state that have separate. Over here in Richmond, there's a 2.5% city tax, that's 2.5% county. So if you have a hotel or hotel, it's 1.6B, you're collecting the full 5%. If you're the super eight out there at Stuckeys, you're collecting 2.5%. Now, I've lost work crews over this when they were building a hospital over that half percent there. These guys, they're ticked off, they're coming down from Michigan, the last thing they want, they'll, they'll walk over half percent. It's huge silly. Diana Farrington, the regional manager for the Fairfield, has pulled them a couple different times, last year and four years ago, that, you know, their ownership group has multiple hotels, and they've lost corporate contracts over 1%. She's pulled them out. But my concern is, this is the third time in four years this has come up. You know, at some point, I'm not, you know, it's going to pass. And you need to be aware of what your options are as to that. But already at the 10%, I'm collecting more tax than that super eight out by Stuckeys. They get full representation, all that money, all 5% or 2.5% in Wayne County goes to that tourism bureau to bring in more money. Currently, the township, the only thing, for the last 15 years, there's been nothing going for that. Last fall, they agreed to put up half the money for that billboard out on the interstate. Ideally, it should be being used to bring in more tourism to the area, but it can go straight into the general fund, just like if you guys levy this first taxes, 08, it says, you know, you can use it for whatever you want, but it will put this campground, you know, they'd be collecting, if you collect both, they'd be collecting 13%, which just seems high. 10% seems high, some don't even notice it. When I was down there on the night, they said, well, how much business do you lose? Well, how do you quantify if somebody doesn't come back? They're in the room, you don't know if they don't come back. Can we stay down the street? You never know. It's just something you really can't tell. And I know that this is what your buys do. They want to say, it doesn't affect your income, it's a tax above and beyond your income. It does affect it. If you have to match other properties over that, it does put a hit on you. I mean, I don't know what they're collecting down here, but if it's over 70,000, that's a lot of updating you can be doing for that kind of money. And it would make a complete impact down here. But if it's going to be an impact, it should be collected locally and used to make that property, kind of, the billboard.
Basically, what you're saying is the taxes, that if this is enacted, the money that is brought in down there, it's going to go out of New Parish anyway. We're not going to get that shit out of it, basically.
Well, they're going to argue that you're going to promote the whole county with the website. Now, if you look in the number, I already have a website up there after the business is on here. I don't charge to make it because, you know, the restaurants, if they have menus, I put them up there because it helps my guests. I can pick them up right there in the office and they can see what's available and come up here. It helps me, it helps them. When a community, the more websites it has developed locally, unless you have like Wiki, you know, or a bunch of different other places, but right now, Purple County, searching into these businesses, I've not seen any of the local businesses come up. And I don't want to take you tonight, you've got a ton of other stuff here, but I wanted you to be aware of it and good luck making the decision.
Okay.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to take off because I can watch the video. We'll see y'all.
Thanks, Jeff.
Norma loves how it requests that you be on the agenda like Jeff did.
Yeah, I tried.
Since I know, and that's why I'm going to go ahead and let you talk.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
I'll leave because I have a short reading. Now, everybody I've said was supposed to, but I never saw it. Yes. The first reading. Is that what you gave?
Yeah.
It's called the tax. Yeah. You want me to read it or you want me to finger it? Oh, no, go ahead, Mariana. Why wasn't the ordinance advertised to the public before the first reading? Some people said it was in the post office, but a lot of people didn't. People of the village should have the right, according to the Constitution, to have knowledge of the content of the ordinance, which will affect their daily lives. Introducing the ordinance in this way is one of the first steps of totalitarianism, government from one party. Summing this up, it is not democracy of the people, by the people, or for the people, which is supposed to be. We got the white flag, you know, we're trying to get democracy across the pond and losing it here. Is this really an emergency or is it not sticking to a budget? We can make do with the funds we have. That's what I do. If I'm driving an 087 Cadillac, sure, if somebody wants to help take out money, I'm buying it with them. Thank you for letting me speak.
Any questions for those? Thank you. Susan Skits isn't going to want you to be here tonight. Committee reports. Say something.
Police department handled 100,000 calls for service in May, except 28 reports made three arrests, issued nine citations, 14 warnings, and found in two vehicles. The police department spent $3,920.72, which is 56% of our $7,000 fuel budget for this year. That's all I got for that.
Any questions for the committee? Building?
No.
Streets? I don't know where, other than that, we got the grant for.
We do have a grant for the continuation of Washington Street from Dairy Queen to the Federico and from, or, walnut?
Walnut.
Walnut down to the Legion. We've, we've been awarded that grant. The money will not be appropriated until sometime in July, which is too late into this year to put out bids and have it done before bad weather sits in, so that will be done next year. But we do have the money appropriated for that through a grant that we applied for. And that will continue, the main drag through New Parish will be complete at that point, is what we've all been striving for, because we feel like birth of parish is the most important.
How that goes to repair that from Dairy Queen all the way down through town on the east side of town, you know, where it's all terrible, mucky and bumpy.
The east side.
Where they're very difficult to hear anything of.
Well.
It doesn't be repaired in the project or?
The project, this project is from Dairy Queen South, which will be sidewalks, some storm sewer, and tree removal and curve in sidewalk.
On the east side of, north, are they going to fix that where it's worse than it was before they done it to start with?
That is not in this project.
Tell them to fix what they got tore up and piss on the other project.
Fortunately, when we apply for grants, we have to use it where we apply for the grants at. You can't take it from this and put it somewhere else. They definitely, what you apply.
That was down one year before it was tore up and it's, you can't ride a motorcycle down at Kenyon Dallas, you know.
I got the privilege.
You got both. So anyway, that's just a throw in. They all repair what they, whoever tore it up, all repair it, it's what they continue on. If they don't, they're just going to have to do that, I think they'll have another pipeline to do there and rough all the way through it.
Okay, we need to move on. I got this letter from Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Dear Mr. Alton, this letter is a follow-up to your Nature Works application submission earlier this year. The Nature Works is entertaining throughout providing needed funding for local public agencies around the state. Funding for the program comes from the revenue generated through bond sales and is appropriated to our department and the state's biennium capital budget bill due to the gubernatorial election in 2010. The capital bill for the current biennium was delayed. The bill has been further delayed by Governor Kasich, addressing the well-known and complex budgetary issues of where our state is facing. After careful consideration of the delay and the needs of so many communities to make recreational improvements with very limited funds, we have decided to conduct the 18th round with the counties that have viable carryover funding that remains from previously funded and closed projects. This results in funding being available for 57 of the 88 counties in State Ohio. Because of the consistent and ongoing demand of your county, we do not have viable carryover funds available for this year. We will keep your application eligible for next year's round. If you do not want this application to remain eligible for 2012, please send written notification to my office in November. We will send a reminder that your application is eligible and the estimated amount of funds we expect to be available in 2012. With that reminder letter, we will provide forms to make adjustments to your budget in Jackson. Which we did not give.
Shock that family.
Absolutely. No. House lights?
We still got a problem with light and shade right now. I'll get with Jenny tomorrow. We'll get that called in, Jenny. I guess there's a lens missing on the pole period. It was just a bulb. The one on Lincoln Street, I checked it out, four light colors. Probably out there.
Okay.
I want it for night.
As Jack Silver's telling me that, you know, what they're doing is out there.
Other than that, I have my little reported out, which is.
Okay. Sanitation, Mary Jane?
Several places are being moved, most of them vacant places. I got a letter from our attorney about 406 New Parish Avenue, which is a terrible mess again. And 101, or 301 West Main Street, that's where the house burnt, being over by the tool company. Mr. Amick, I wrote him a letter, sent him all the letters that we received from the Health Board and the county on the condition of the property. And he says that the estimate, that the legal fees in the incident to my services in connection with his proposed action would be $1,000 to $1,500 plus court costs of about $300 to $500. So we either get that approved, come up with the money, give him the okay to go to court to get the court order to get it torn down. Billy seems to think that he can tear it down with a bat hole.
It's not my style.
I know. So if that's what council wishes to do and get it done, I wouldn't like for the mayor to call the attorney and give him the okay to do this.
What are you going to do about the Rick Stevens' old house?
Oh, that's under investigation. It was arson. Fire marshal's working on that.
Before we make a decision on Main Street, is that also a possibility of under investigation, Chris?
I don't know.
That all tied in with the other one? However, if it's going to take the attorney a while to do it, you know, it's ultimately your guys' decision whether or not you want to spend the money, but I don't see it taking us, you know, as long as it's going to take them to get it put out.
I do need to contact the property owner, who is Perry Johnson, to see, I talked with the bank and they made a statement that Perry may have insurance that might cover this. So if he does, and I think we need to push him.
Take care.
And then we'll, I'll come, I guess I'll come back.
And that's where we need to go. Once you contact him and go on that route first, and then we'll see the way out after that.
Okay.
And make sure to take, and take care of your own mess.
I don't see, I don't know, maybe as insurance or not, but.
He's going to need to find that out.
That's what he's, that's what I'm saying.
He's staying with Main Street, right now, in case you need to go.
Okay.
Care to find out what bank that's through?
Uh, yeah, I have it at home. I have it in the report, but I don't remember.
I didn't know there was another one would deal, like it might be in Texas or somewhere.
Well.
It is.
Yeah, part of it is. That's all I have.
That's all you got? Planning? We didn't have anything. VPA? They've got this resolution, ordinance, ordinance 2011, changing distribution of water.
I'll get you.
Which ordinance is it?
It's ordinance number 2011, dash 09. This is the ordinance.
Oh, $1.
In ordinance to increase the rents and or charges for providing water service to residents and customers of the village and areas, Purple County, State of Ohio, and decrease the rents and or charges for providing sewer service to the residents and customers of the village and areas, Purple County, State of Ohio. Whereas in accordance to Bible's rules and regulations set forth by the council of the village of New Parish and the Board of Public Affairs of the village of New Parish, the Board of Public Affairs has recommended to the council, the village of New Parish, an increase in the rates for rents and or charges to provide water service to the customers of the village of New Parish water system, and to decrease in the rents and or charges to provide sewer service to the customers of the village of New Parish's waste water system. Whereas council has determined that the Board of Public Affairs recommendation that in order to provide a safe, efficient supply of water to the residents of New Parish, Ohio, the rate increase is necessary to maintain supply and distribution of the village water supply. Now, being therefore named by the council of the village of New Parish, Purple County, State of Ohio, Section 1, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Public Affairs, council hereby consents to increase the current water rents and or charges from the recurrent rate of $1,450 for the minimum amount of 2,000 gallons with an additional charge of $7.25 per 1,000 gallons over the minimum amount of 2,000 gallons to a new rate of $1,850 for the minimum amount of 2,000 gallons and an additional $7.25 per 1,000 gallons over the minimum amount of 2,000 gallons. Section 2, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Public Affairs, council hereby consents to decrease the current wastewater rents or charges from the current rate of $1,150 for the minimum amount of 2,000 gallons with an additional charge of $5 per 1,000 gallons over the minimum amount of 2,000 gallons to a new rate of $7.50 for a minimum amount of 2,000 gallons and an additional $5.00 per 1,000 gallons over the minimum amount of 2,000 gallons. That this ordinance shall be declared an emergency measure necessary for the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the village of New Parish, and that the same is immediately necessary to provide for the orderly continuation of vital services to the residents of such villages. Therefore, this order shall be declared to be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approved by the mayor. Section 3, approved by council, the rate adjustments will be in effect on the 28th day of June 2011 or on the 1st day following the signing of this ordinance, 2011, section 6. Section 5 ordinance, 2011, six, was previously passed, boards to set the rate for rents and or charges for water and sewer usage in the village of New Parish and the state of Ohio.
I don't think we need to increase water rate.
They're not, they're not increasing.
They're not increasing it? Okay, they said something about increasing.
It's going to be the same, Jean. They're just taking away from one and adding to the others.
Are they sure that that's what they're going to do?
Yes.
Positive. I trust them.
It's the same amount of money, but because the state says you have to put, you know, it's the general fund, street fund, same way the VPA on water and sewer.
But in the end, my bill is going to be the same.
The rate's the same, it's just allow them to increase more on the water side where they pay their bills from and drop the sewer side.
Okay. I think, it's clear when you explain it to me, but reading it was kind of a little empty, because all I seen was increased. Okay, that's settled.
It allows them, which budget, to put the money in so they can use the money, because they think most of their bill is on the water side.
Oh, okay.
Because if you do any of the, if the state of Ohio steps in and jumps all over you for using it out of their own budget.
All right, I understand. Now that he's explained it.
Would the council wish to, all right, make a motion that we accept resolution?
2011 dash 09.
2011 dash 09. Is there a second?
A second.
Rule call.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Just take me again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
And Mary was saying, I don't think what that's the next meeting, do we need to pass that as a first?
Yes, she did.
I'd like to take the motion and we pass the resolution 2009 dash 11, as emergency, and declare the three.
The way, the way is really. I'll say. Second. Joe, second. Rule call.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yeah.
Yeah, they agree. This is the general ordinance. Now, we're going to, we're shooting this. Okay, that's on the agenda. Is, second rule of New Parish income tax ordinance, number 25 dash 05. Does council wish me to read this in complete?
All 28 pages of citizens that I've read, you read it and publish it.
For the penalty. We did read it for last name.
Read it again if I haven't heard it all.
Then we shall read exactly just that.
Okay.
Village New Parish income tax ordinance, number 2011 dash 05, levying a tax to provide funds for the purpose of general municipal operation, maintenance, and equipment, extension, enlargement, improvement of municipal services. municipal income taxes and annual municipal income tax liability for, or for filing a refund claim that is not prescribed by a particular municipal corporation for the reporting of that municipal corporation's tax on income, any municipality that requires taxpayers to file income tax returns, reports or other documents shall accept for filing a generic form of such a return. Report documented as the generic form once completed and filed contains all of the information required to be submitted with the municipality's prescribed returns for documents. Gross receipts means total income of taxpayers from whatever source derived. Fifteen, income from a passed through entity means partnership income or a partnership interest of members of a limited liability, liability, right, company, distributive shares of shareholders other of an S. corporation or other distributive or proportionate ownership shares of income from other passed through entities. Sixteen, intangible income means income of any of the following types, income of yield, interest, capital gains, dividends or other income arising from the unship, sale, exchange or other disposition of intangible property, including but not limited to investments, deposits, money or credits as those terms are defined in chapter fifty-seven oh one of the Ohio Revised Code, and patents, copyrights, trademarks, trade names, investments and real estate, investment trusts, investments in regulated investment companies and appreciation on deferred compensation. Intangible income does not include prizes, awards or other income associated with any lottery winnings or other singular games of chance. Seventeen, Internal Revenue Code means the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, one hundred stat point two oh eight five, twenty-sixth USC one as amended. Eighteen, Internet means the International Computer Network, both federal and non-federal, inter窩able pocket, switched data networks, including the graphical cell network known as the World Wide Web. Nineteen, Joint Economic Development District means districts created under the Ohio Revised Code, section seven one five point seven out through seven one five point eight three as amended from time to time. Twenty, limited liability company means a limited liability company formed under chapter seventeen oh five of the Ohio Revised Code or under the laws of another state. Twenty-one, municipality means the village of New Paris, Prok County, Ohio. Twenty-two, net profit for a taxpayer other than an individual means adjusted federal taxable income, and net profit for a taxpayer who is an individual means the individual's profit other than a amount prescribed in Division F of section three required to be reported on Schedule C, Schedule E or Schedule F. Twenty-three, non-qualified deferred compensation plan means compensation plan described in section thirty-one, twenty-one, V two, C of the Internal Revenue Code. Non-resident means an individual domicile outside the village of New Paris. Twenty-five, non-resident incorporated business entity means an incorporated business entity not having an office or place of business within the village of New Paris. Twenty-six, non-resident unincorporated business entity means an unincorporated business entity not having an office or place of business within the village of New Paris. Forty-seven, other payer means any person other than an individual employer or employee agent that pays an individual any amount included in the federal gross income of the individual, plenty owner means a partner of a partnership and member of a limited liability company, a shareholder of an S. corporation or other person with an ownership interest in a passed through entity. Twenty-nine, owners of proportionate share with respect to each owner of a passed through entity means the ratio of, A, the owner's income from the passed through entity that is subject to taxation by the municipal corporation, B, the total income from that entity of all owners whose income from the entity is subject to taxation by that municipal corporation. Thirty, passed through entity means a partnership, limited liability company, S. corporation or any other class of entity of the income or profits from which are given passed through treatment under the Internal Revenue Code. Thirty-one, person includes individuals, firms, companies, business trusts, estates, trusts, partnerships, limited liability companies, associations, corporations, governmental entities and any other entity. Thirty-two, place of business means any bona fide office other than a mere statutory office, factory, warehouse or other space which is occupied and used by the taxpayer in carrying on any business activity individually or through one or more of his regular employees regularly in attendance. Thirty-three, principal place of business means in the case of an employer having headquarters activities at a place of business within a taxing municipality, the place of business of which the headquarters is situated, in the case of any employer not having its headquarters activities at a place of business within a taxing municipality. The term means the largest place of business located in a taxing municipality, municipality. Qualified plan means a treatment, retirement plan satisfying the requirements under section four oh one of the Internal Revenue Code as amended. Qualifying wages means wages as defined in section thirty-one, twenty-one, A of the Internal Revenue Code without regard to any wage limitations adjusted in accordance with section seven one eight point oh three, A of the Ohio Revised Code. Resident means an individual domicile in the village of New Paris. Three, resident incorporated business entity means an incorporated business entity whose office, place of operations or business stop, citizens within the village of New Paris. Resident unincorporated business entity means an unincorporated business entity having an office or place of business within the village of New Paris. Thirty-nine, return preparer means any person other than a taxpayer that is authorized by a taxpayer to plead or file an income tax return, report or other document for or on behalf of the taxpayer. Rules and regulations means the rules and regulations as set forth in this ordinance. Forty-one, Schedule C means Internal Revenue Service, Schedule C filed by a taxpayer pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. Forty-two, Schedule E means Internal Revenue Service, Schedule E filed by a taxpayer pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. Forty-three, Schedule F, returns of Internal Revenue Service, Schedule F filed by a taxpayer pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. Forty-four, S. corporation means a corporation that has made an election under subchapter S of chapter one of subtitle A of the Internal Revenue Code for its taxable year. Forty-five, tax administrator means the person appointed to administer the municipality's income tax ordinance and to direct the operation of the municipal income tax department or the person executing the duties of the tax administrator. Forty-six, taxable income means qualifying wages paid by an employer or employers, compensation for personal services, other income defined by statute as taxable and/or adjusted federal taxable income from the operation of a business, profession or other enterprise or activity adjusted in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance. Forty-seven, taxable year means the corresponding tax reporting period as prescribed for the taxpayer under the Internal Revenue Code. Forty-eight, taxing municipality means a municipality levy a tax on income earned by non-residents working within such municipality or on income earned by its residents. Forty-nine, taxpayer means a person subject to a tax on income levied by a municipal corporation. Taxpayer does not include any person that is a disregarded entity or a qualifying subchapter S subsidiary or federal income tax purposes, but taxpayer includes any of the parts he owns, the disregarded entity of qualifying subchapter S subsidiary. The singular shall include the plural, the masculine shall include the feminine and the neuter, and all periods set forth shall be inclusive of the first and last mentioned in section three, imposition of tax basis of imposition, to provide for the purposes of general municipal operations, maintenance, new equipment and capital improvements of the village of New Paris, there is hereby levied tax at a rate of one percent per annum upon the following, on all qualifying wages, commissions, other compensation and other taxable income earned or received by residents of the village of New Paris, on all qualifying wages, commissions, other compensation and other taxable income earned or received by non-residents for work done or services performed or rendered in the village of New Paris, on the portion attributable to the village of New Paris of the net profits earned by all resident unincorporated businesses, passed through entities, professions or other activities derived from work done or services performed or rendered, and businesses or other activities conducted in the village of New Paris, on the portion of the distributive share of the net profits earned by a resident owner of a resident unincorporated business entity or passed through entity not attributable to the village of New Paris and not levied against such incorporated business entity or passed through entity. Four, on the portion attributable to the village of New Paris, on the net profits of, by all non-resident unincorporated businesses, passed through entities, professions or other activities derived from work done or services performed or rendered in businesses or other activities conducted in the village of New Paris, whether or not such unincorporated business entity has an office or place of business in the village of New Paris, on the portion of the distributive share of the net profits earned by a resident owner of a resident unincorporated business entity or passed through entity not attributable to the village of New Paris and not levied against such unincorporated business entity or passed through entity. Four, on the portion attributable to the village of New Paris, on the net profits of, by all non-resident unincorporated businesses, passed through entities, professions or other activities derived from work done or services performed or rendered in businesses or other activities conducted in the village of New Paris, whether or not such unincorporated business entity has an office or place of business in the village of New Paris, on the portion of the distributive share of the net profits earned by a resident owner of a non-resident unincorporated business entity or passed through entity not attributable to the village of New Paris and not levied against such unincorporated business entity or passed through entity. Five, on the portion attributable to the village of New Paris, of the net profits earned by all corporations that are not passed through entities from work done or services performed or rendered in businesses or other activities conducted in the village of New Paris, whether or not such unincorporated business entity has an office or place of business in the village of New Paris, on the portion of the distributive share of the net profits earned by a resident owner of a non-resident unincorporated business entity or passed through entity not attributable to the village of New Paris and not levied against such unincorporated business entity or passed through entity. Five, on the portion attributable to the village of New Paris, of the net profits earned by all corporations that are not passed through entities from work done or services performed or rendered in businesses or other activities conducted in the village of New Paris, whether or not such unincorporated business entity has an office or place of business in the village of New Paris, on the portion of the distributive share of the net profits earned by a resident owner of a resident unincorporated business entity or passed through entity not attributable to the village of New Paris and not levied against such unincorporated business entity or passed through entity. Five, on the portion attributable to the village of New Paris, of the net profits earned by all corporations that are not passed through entities from work done or services performed or rendered in businesses or other activities conducted in the village of New Paris, whether or not such unincorporated business entity has an office or place of business in the village of New Paris, on the portion of the distributive share of the net profits earned by a resident owner of a non-resident unincorporated business entity or passed through entity not attributable to the village of New Paris and not levied against such unincorporated business entity or passed through entity. Six, on the income received as gambling winnings as reported from on IRS Form W two G, Form five seven five four and any other form required by the Internal Revenue Service that reports winnings from gambling prizes and lottery winnings, being businesses both in and outside the municipal boundaries. This section does not apply to taxpayers that are subject to and required to file reports under chapter five seven four five of the Ohio Revised Code, except as otherwise provided in Division D of this section. Net profit from a business or profession conducted both within and without the boundaries of a municipal corporation shall be considered as having a taxable status in such municipal corporation for purposes of municipal income taxation in the same proportion of the average ratio as the following. One, multiply the entire net profits of the business by a business apportionment percentage to be determined by, A, the average original cost of the real and tangible personal property owned or used by the taxpayer in the business or profession, and such municipal corporation during the taxable period to the average original cost of all of the real and tangible personal property owned or used by the taxpayer in the business or profession during the same period wherever situated. As used in the preceding paragraph, real property shall include property rented or leased by a taxpayer, and the value of such property shall be determined by multiplying the annual rental thereon by eight. B, wages, salaries and other compensation paid during the taxable period to persons employed in the business or profession, for services performed in such municipal corporation to the wages, salaries and other compensation paid during the same period to persons employed in the business or profession, wherever their services are performed, excluding compensation that is not taxable by the municipal corporation, under section seven one eight point zero one one of the Ohio Revised Code. C, gross receipts of the business or profession from sales made and services performed during the taxable period in such municipal corporation to gross receipts of the business or profession during the same period from sales and services wherever made or performed. D, adding together the percentage determined in accordance with subsections B, one, A, B and C hereof, or such of the four set percentages as are applicable to the particular taxpayer and, quite until so obtained by the number of percentages used and derived in such. One, factors applicable even though it may be a portion to target in or outside the village of New Paris, two, provided however that in the event an adjusted and equitable result cannot be obtained under the formula provided for her and the tax administrator, upon application of the taxpayer, shall have the authority to substitute other factors or methods calculated to effect a fair and proper apportionment. C, under use in Division B of this section, sales made in a municipal corporation means, one, all sales of tangible personal property delivered within such municipal corporation regardless of where title passes are shipped or delivered from a stock of goods within such municipal corporation to all sales of tangible personal property delivered within such municipal corporation regardless of where title passes even though transported from a point outside such municipal corporation, if the taxpayer is regularly engaged through its own employees in the solicitation or promotion of sales within such municipal corporation and the sales result from such solicitation or promotion. Three, all sales of tangible personal property shipped from a place within such municipal corporation to purchasers outside such municipal corporation regardless of where title passes, if the taxpayer is not through its own employees regularly engaged in the solicitation or promotion of sales at the place where delivery is paid. D, except as otherwise provided in Division E of this section, net profit from rental activity not constituting a business or profession shall be subject to tax only by the municipal corporation in which the profit generated the net profits located. E, this section does not apply to individuals who are residents of the village of New Paris and, except as otherwise provided in section seven one eight point oh one of the Ohio Revised Code, the village of New Paris may impose a tax on all income earned by residents of the village of New Paris to be exempt, allowed by the United States Constitution of, net operating loss, NOL. One, the portion of the net operating loss sustained in any taxable year portioned to the village of New Paris may be applied against the portion of the profit of succeeding tax years, a portion to the village of New Paris until exhausted, but in no event for more than the three taxable years immediately following the year in which the loss occurred. No portion of the net operating loss shall be carried back against the net profits of any prior year. Two, the portion of the net operating loss
The Ohio revised code, resident means an individual domiciled in the Village of New Paris. Three, resident incorporated business entity means an incorporated business entity whose office, place of operations or business stop, uh, citizens within the Village of New Paris. Resident unincorporated business entity means an unincorporated business entity having an office or place of business within the Village of New Paris. Thirty-nine, return preparer means any person other than a taxpayer that is authorized by a taxpayer to plead or file an income tax return, report or other document for or on behalf of the taxpayer. Rules and regulations means the rules and regulations as set forth in this ordinance. Forty-one, Schedule C means Internal Revenue Service Schedule filed, Schedule C filed by a taxpayer pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. Forty-two, Schedule E means Internal Revenue Service Schedule E filed by a taxpayer pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. Forty-three, Schedule F, returns Internal Revenue Service Schedule F filed by a taxpayer pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. Forty-four, S Corporation means a corporation that has made an election under subchapter S of chapter one of subtitle A of the Internal Revenue Code for its taxable year. Forty-five, tax administrator means the person appointed to administer the municipality's income tax ordinance and to direct the operation of the municipal income tax department, or the person executing the duties of the tax administrator. Forty-six, taxable income means qualifying wages paid by an employer or employers, compensation for personal services, other income defined by statute as taxable and/or adjusted for tax income from the operation of a business, profession, or other enterprise, or activity adjusted in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance. Forty-seven, taxable year means the corresponding tax reporting period as prescribed for the taxpayer under the Internal Revenue Code. Forty-eight, taxing municipality means a municipality levy a tax on income earned by non-residents working within such municipality or on income earned by its residents. Forty-nine, taxpayer means a person subject to a tax on income levied by a municipal corporation. Taxpayer does not include any person that is a disregarded entity or a qualifying subchapter S subsidiary or federal income tax purposes, but taxpayer includes any other purpose he owns, the disregarded entity of qualifying subchapter S subsidiary. This singular shall include the plural, the masculine shall include the feminine and the neuter, and all periods set forth shall be inclusive of the first and last mentioned in section three, imposition of tax basis of imposition. To provide for the purposes of general municipal operations, maintenance, new equipment, and capital improvements of the Village of New Paris, there is hereby levied a tax at a rate of one percent per annum upon the following: on all qualifying wages, commissions, other compensation, and other taxable income earned or received by residents of the Village of New Paris; on all qualifying wages, commissions, other compensation, and other taxable income earned or received by non-residents for work done or services performed or rendered in the Village of New Paris; on the portion attributable to the Village of New Paris of net profits earned by all resident unincorporated businesses, pass-through entities, professions, or other activities derived from work done or services performed or rendered, and businesses or other activities conducted in the Village of New Paris; on the portion of the distributive share of the net profits earned by a resident owner of a resident unincorporated business entity or pass-through entity not attributable to the Village of New Paris and not levied against such incorporated business entity or pass-through entity. Four, on the portion attributable to the Village of New Paris on the net profits of, by all non-resident unincorporated businesses, pass-through entities, professions, or other activities derived from work done or services performed or rendered, and businesses or other activities conducted in the Village of New Paris, whether or not such unincorporated business entity has an office or place of business in the Village of New Paris; on the portion of the distributive share of the net profits earned by a resident owner of a non-resident unincorporated business entity or pass-through entity not attributable to the Village of New Paris and not levied against such unincorporated business entity or pass-through entity. Five, on the portion attributable to the Village of New Paris of the net profits earned by all corporations that are not pass-through entities from work done or services performed or rendered, and business or other activities conducted in the Village of New Paris, whether or not such corporations have an office or place of business in the Village of New Paris. Six, on all income received as gambling winnings as reported from on IRS form W-2G Form 5754 and any other form required by the Internal Revenue Service that reports winnings from gambling prizes and lottery winnings, being businesses both in and outside the municipal boundaries. This section does not apply to taxpayers that are subject to and required to follow reports under chapter five, seven, four, five of the Ohio revised code, except as otherwise provided in division D of this section. Net profit from a business or profession conducted both within and without the boundaries of a municipal corporation shall be considered as having a taxable status in such municipal corporation for purposes of municipal income taxation in the same proportion of the average ratio as the following: one, multiply the entire net profits of the business by a business apportionment percentage to be determined by a, the average, original cost of the real intangible personal property owned or used by the taxpayer in the business or profession in such municipal corporation during the taxable period to the average original cost of all of the real intangible personal property owned or used by the taxpayer in the business or profession during the same period, wherever situated. As used in the preceding paragraph, real property shall include property rented or leased by a taxpayer, and the value of such property shall be determined by multiplying the annual rental thereon by eight. B, wages, salaries, and other compensation paid during the taxable period to persons employed in the business or profession, or services performed in such municipal corporation to the wages, salaries, and other compensation paid during the same period to persons employed in the business or profession, wherever their services are performed, excluding compensation that is not taxable by the municipal corporation. Under section seven, one, eight, point zero, one, one of the Ohio revised code, C, gross receipts of the business or profession from sales made and services performed during the taxable period in such municipal corporation to gross receipts of the business or profession during the same period from sales and services wherever made or performed. D, adding together the percentage performed, determined in accordance with subsections B, one, A, B, and C hereof, or such of the four said percentages as are applicable to the particular taxpayer and quite untold so obtained by the number of percentages used in deriving such. One, factors applicable, even though it may be apportioned entirely in or outside the Village of New Paris, two, provided however that in the event an adjusted and equitable result cannot be obtained under the formula provided herein, the tax administrator upon application of the taxpayer shall have the authority to substitute other factors or methods calculated to effect a fair and proper apportionment. C, under use in division B of this section, sales made in a municipal corporation means one, all sales of tangible personal property delivered within such municipal corporation regardless of where title passes are shipped or delivered from a stock of goods within such municipal corporation to all sales of tangible personal property delivered within such municipal corporation regardless of where title passes, even though transported from a point outside such municipal corporation, if the taxpayer is regularly engaged through its own employees in the solicitation or promotion of sales within such municipal corporation and the sales result from such solicitation or promotion. Three, all sales of tangible personal property shipped from a place within such municipal corporation to purchasers outside such municipal corporation regardless of where title passes, if the taxpayer is not through its own employees regularly engaged in the solicitation or promotion of sales at the place where delivery is paid. D, except as otherwise provided in division E of this section, net profit from rental activity not constituting a business or profession shall be subject to tax only by the municipal corporation in which the profit generated, the net profits located. E, this section does not apply to individuals who are residents of the Village of New Paris and except as otherwise provided in section seven, one, eight, point oh, one of the Ohio revised code, the Village of New Paris may impose a tax on all income earned by residents of the Village of New Paris to the extent allowed by the United States Constitution of net operating loss, NOL. One, the portion of the net operating loss sustained in any taxable year, a portion to the Village of New Paris may be applied against the portion of the profit of succeeding tax years, a portion to the Village of New Paris until exhausted, but in no event for more than the three taxable years immediately following the year in which the loss occurred. No portion of the net operating loss shall be carried back against the net profits of any prior year. Two, the portion of the net operating loss sustained shall be apportioned to the Village of New Paris in the same manner as provided herein for apportioning net profits to the Village of New Paris. Three, the tax administrator shall provide by rules and regulations the manner in which such net operating loss carried forward shall be determined. For the net operating loss of a taxpayer that loses its legal identity by any means such as merger or consolidation shall not be allowed as a carry-forward loss deduction to the surviving or new taxpayer. Five, the net operating loss sustained by a business or profession is not deductible from employee earnings, but may be carried forward as provided in subsection F. However, if the taxpayer is engaged in two or more taxable business activities to be included in the same return, the net loss of one unincorporated business activity, except any portion of a loss reportable for municipal income tax purposes to another municipality, may be used to offset the profits of another for purposes of arriving at overall net profits. G, consolidated returns. One, a consolidated return may be filed by a group of corporations who are affiliated through stock ownership, if that affiliated group filed for the same tax period or a consolidated return for federal income tax purposes pursuant to section fifteen oh, one of the Internal Revenue Code, a consolidated return must include all companies that are so affiliated. Two, once a consolidated return has been filed for any taxable year, consolidated returns shall continue to be filed in subsequent years unless the applicable requirements and the rules and regulations for discontinuing the filing of consolidated returns have been met. H, exclusions, the provisions of this ordinance shall not be construed as levying in tax upon the following: proceeds from welfare benefits, unemployment insurance benefits, social security benefits, and qualified retirement plans as defined by the Internal Revenue Service. Two, proceeds of insurance, annuities, workers' compensation, insurance, permanent disability benefits, compensation for damages for personal injury and like reimbursements, not included damages for loss of profits and wages. Three, dues, contributions to cellular payments received by charitable, religious, educational organizations, or labor unions, trade, or professional associations, lodges, and cellular organizations. Four, gains from involuntary conversion, cancellation of indebtedness, interest on federal obligations, and income of a descendant's estate during the period of administration, except such income from the operation of a business. Five, alimony. Six, compensation for damage to property by way of insurance or otherwise. Seven, interest on dividends from intangible property. Eight, military pay or allowances of members of the armed forces of the United States and of members of their reserve components, including the Ohio National Guard, ORC, seven oh, one, eight, point oh, one. Nine, income from services performed by the spouse of a service member shall not be deemed to be income for services performed or from services within a taxing jurisdiction of the United States if the spouse is not a resident or domiciled, how do you spell it? Domiciled, I can't say it. Domiciled of the jurisdiction in which the income is earned because the spouse is in the jurisdiction solely to be with the service member suing in compliance with the military orders. Ten, income of any charitable, educational, paternal, or other type of nonprofit association or organization enumerated in Ohio revised code seven, one, eight, one, oh, one, to the extent that such income is derived from tax-exempt real estate, tax-exempt tangible or intangible property, or taxable, or tax-exempt activities. Eleven, any association or organization falling in the category listed in the preceding paragraph receiving income from non-exempt real estate, tangible or intangible personal property, or business activities of the type ordinarily conducted for profit by taxpayers operated for profit shall not be excluded here. Twelve, in the event any association or organization receives taxable income as provided in the preceding paragraph for real or personal ownership or income of producing business located both within and without the corporate limits of the Village of New Paris, this shall calculate its income proportion to the Village of New Paris under the method or methods provided herein above. Thirteen, if exempt for federal income tax purposes, fellowship, or scholarship grants are excluded from municipal income tax. Fourteen, the rental value of a home furnished to a minister of the gospel as part of his compensation, or the rental allowance paid to a minister of the gospel as part of this compensation to the extent used by him to rent or provide a home pursuant to section one oh, seven of the Internal Revenue Code. Fifteen, compensation paid under section thirty-five oh, one, point two, eight, or thirty-five oh, one, point three, six of the Ohio revised code to a person serving as a precinct official to the extent that such compensation does not exceed one thousand dollars annually. Such compensation in excess of one thousand dollars may be subject to taxation. A payer of such compensation is not required to withhold municipal tax from that compensation. Sixteen, compensation paid to an employee of a transit authority, regional transit authority, or a regional transit commission created under chapter three oh, six of the Ohio revised code for operating a transit bus or other motor vehicle for the authority of or commission in or through the Village of New Paris unless the bus or vehicle is operated on a regularly scheduled route. The operator subject to such tax by reason of residence or domicile in the Village of New Paris or the headquarters of the authority or commission is located within the Village of New Paris. Seventeen, the Village of New Paris shall not tax the compensation paid to a non-resident individual for personal services performed by the individual in the Village of New Paris on twelve or fewer days in the calendar year unless one of the following applies: A, the individual is an employee of another person, the principal place of business of the individual's employer is located in another municipality in Ohio that opposes the tax applying to compensation paid to the individual for services paid on those days, and the individual is not liable to that other municipality for tax on the compensation paid for such services to be. The individual is a professional entertainer or professional athlete, a promoter of a professional entertainment or sports event, or an employee of such promoter, all as may be reasonably defined by the Village of New Paris. Eighteen, the income of a public utility, when that public utility is subject to the tax levied under section five, seven, two, seven, point two, four, or five, seven, two, seven, point three, oh, of the Ohio revised code, except a municipal corporation may tax the following, subject to chapter five, seven, four, five of the Ohio revised code: A, the income of an electric company or combined company; B, the income of a telephone company, as used in division F seventeen of this section. Combined company, electric company, and telephone company have the same meanings as in section five, seven, two, seven, point oh, one of the Ohio revised code. Nineteen, nest corporation shareholders, distributive share of net profits or losses of the S corporation. Twenty, generally the above noted items in this section are the only forms of income not subject to tax. Any other, any other income, benefits, or other forms of compensation shall be taxable. One, mandatory registration. One, each new resident of the Village of New Paris shall register with the Village Income Tax Department within thirty days of residency in the Village of New Paris. Two, all employers, contractors, or subcontractors who do work in the Village of New Paris shall register with the Village Income Tax Department when work begins and shall present a list of all subcontractors and others that may do work for them. Three, all landlords who rent property or dwellings in the Village of New Paris must submit on a semi-annual basis an up-to-date list of their tenants to the tax administrator. The list is not required if the tenants are responsible for their own water utility payments. Four, any person who violates this section shall be in violation of this ordinance punishable as provided in section twelve. Section four, effective period, said tax shall be levied, collected, and paid with respect to the salaries, qualifying wages, commissions, and other compensation earned or received, and shall be levied with respect to the net profits of the business's professional or other activities earned on and after July first, two thousand and eleven. Section five, return and payment of tax. A, effective with the date of this ordinance, and each year thereafter, every resident taxpayer without exception and regardless of whether or not a tax is due, shall make a final return on a form prescribed by and acceptable to the tax administrator on or before April fifteenth of each year. When the return is made for a fiscal year or other period different from the calendar year, the return shall be filed on or before the fifteenth day of the fourth month following the end of such fiscal year or period. The tax administrator is hereby authorized to provide by regulation that the return of an employer or employers showing the amount of municipal tax deducted by said employer or employers from the qualifying wages, commissions, other compensation, and other taxable income of a, excuse me, non-resident employee, and said by him or them to the tax administrator may be accepted as the return required of a non-resident employee whose sole income subject to tax under this ordinance is such qualifying wages, commissions, other compensation, and other taxable income. B, a husband and wife may file either separate returns or a joint return for municipal purposes, even though one of the spouses has neither taxable income nor deductions included on the municipal return, regardless of whether they're federal and state returns were filed separately or jointly. If a joint Village of New Paris returns made, the tax shall be computed on the aggregate taxable income, and the liability with respect to the tax shall be joint and self. C, the return shall be filed with the tax administrator on a form or forms furnished by or obtainable upon request from the tax administrator or on a generic form, if the generic form, when completed and filed, contains all of the information required to be submitted with the municipality's prescribed return, and if the taxpayer or return preparer find with the generic form otherwise complies with the ordinance governing the following other details. D, the return shall set forth: one, the aggregate amounts of qualifying wages, commissions, other compensation received allocated or portions, or set aside other income defined by statute as taxable, and gross income from any business, profession, or other activity less allowable, expenses incurred in the acquisition of such gross income during the preceding year and subject to said tax. And two, the amount of the tax imposed by this ordinance on such earnings and profits. And three, such other permanent statements, information, returns, copies of federal or state tax returns, and/or schedules, or other information that the tax administrator may require, including a statement that the figures used in the return are the figures used for federal income tax adjusted to set forth only such income as is taxable under provisions of this ordinance. E, extensions. One, any taxpayer that has requested an extension for filing a federal income tax return may request an extension for filing of a municipal income tax returned by filing a copy of the taxpayer's federal extension request with the municipal tax division. Any taxpayer not required to file a federal income tax return may request an extension for filing a municipal income tax return in writing. All requests for extension must be filed on or before the original due date of the annual return. If the request is granted, the extended due date of the municipal income tax return shall be the last day of the month following the month to which the due date of the federal income tax return has been extended. Two, the tax administrator may deny a taxpayer's request for extension if the taxpayer (A) fails to timely file the request, or (B) owes the municipality any delinquent income tax, penalty, interest, or other charge for late payment or non-payment of income tax, or (C) has failed to file any required income tax return, report, or other related document for a prior tax period. Three, granting of an extension for filing the municipal tax does not extend the due date as provided in this section for any payment of the tax. Hence, penalty and interest may apply to any unpaid tax during the period of extension at the rate set out in section ten. No penalty shall be assessed in those cases in which the return is filed and the final tax paid within the extension period provided by all other filing and payment requirements of the ordinance have been met. Any extension by the tax administrator shall be granted upon the condition that declaration filing, yeah, filing and payment requirements have been fulfilled. However, if upon further examination, if then comes an evident that declaration filing and payment requirements have not been fulfilled, penalty and interest may be assessed in full, and in the same manner as done, no extension has been granted. F, payments with return. One, taxpayer making any return shall at the time of the filing thereof pay to the tax administrator the amount of taxes shown as due. However, credit shall be allowed for (A) any portion of the tax so due, which shall have been deducted at the source pursuant of the provisions in section six, and (B) any portion of the tax which shall have been made by the taxpayer pursuant to the provisions of section seven, and (C) credit to the extent allowed by section fifteen for tax paid to another municipality. Two, subject to the limitations contained in section eleven of this ordinance, any taxpayer who has overpaid the amount of tax to which the Village of New Paris is entitled of the provisions of this ordinance may have such overpayment applied against any subsequent liability herein or at his election indicated on the return. Such overpayment or part thereof shall be refunded, provided that no additional tax or taxes or refunds of less than five dollars shall be collected or refunded. Three, the mere submission of a return reporting to tax liability shall not constitute filing unless accompanied by the required payment. G, amended returns. One, where necessary, an amended return shall be filed in order to report additional income and pay any additional tax due or claim a refund of tax overpaid, subject to the requirements and/or limitations contained in section eleven and fifteen. The tax administrator shall provide, by regulation, the format, and with such amended return shall be filed. Taxpayer may not change the method of accounting or apportionment of net profits after the due date for filing the original return. Two, within three months from the final determination of any federal tax liability affecting the taxpayer's municipal tax liability, such taxpayer shall make and file an amended municipal return showing income tax, income subject to the municipal tax based upon such final determination of federal tax liability, and pay any additional tax shown due thereon or may claim for refund of any overpayment. H, information, returns, schedules, and statements required to support tax returns, which are incomplete without such information, shall be filed within the time limit set forth before the filing of the tax returns and the failure of such file. Information, returns, schedules, and statements shall be in violation of this ordinance provided. However, the taxpayer shall have twenty days after notification by the tax administrator on this authorized date to file the items required by this paragraph. Section six, collection at source. A, withholding an employer, withholding by employer. Each employer within or doing business within the Village of New Paris who employs one or more persons on a salary, wage, commission, or other compensation basis shall be deducted when such salary, wage, commission, or other compensation is paid allocated, apportioned, or set aside, the tax at the rate provided in section three hereof on the qualifying wages due by such employer to each such employee, and shall on or before the fifteenth day of the month following such withholding, make a return and pay to the tax administrator the amount of taxes so deducted. The return shall be of form or forms prescribed by or acceptable to the tax administrator and shall be subject to the rules and regulations prescribed by tax administrator. Such employer shall be liable for the payment of the tax required to be deducted and withheld, whether or not such taxes have been in fact been withheld. B, an employer is not required to make any voting with respect to an individual's disqualifying disposition of an incentive stock option if at the time of the disqualifying disposition the individual is not an employee of the corporation with respect to whose stock and option have been issued. C, one, an employee is not relieved from liability for the tax by the failure of the employer to withhold the tax as required for a municipal corporation or by the employer's intention from the requirement to withhold tax. Two, the failure of an employer to remit to the municipal corporation the tax without relieving the employee from liability for that tax unless the employee concluded, preluded with the employer to, in connection with the failure to remit the tax without receiving so long as the taxes withheld by an employer for the Village of New Paris during the measurement period are less than three hundred dollars per month, or thirty-six hundred dollars annually. Payments may be made quarterly on or before the fifteenth day of the month following the end of each quarter, subject to the approval of the tax administrator. the end of each quarter, subject to the approval of the tax administrator. The tax administrator may revoke the approval of quarterly filing and payments whenever the tax administrator has reason to believe that the conditions for granting such authorization have changed, were judged incorrectly, were not met, or when it is in best interest of the Village of New Paris to do so. Notice of withdrawal shall be made in writing, and in such case, the employer must begin to file in accordance with this section. E, employer considered as trustee. Each employer is collecting such tax shall be deemed to hold the same until payment is made by such employer to the Village of New Paris as a trustee for the benefit of the Village of New Paris, and any such tax collected by such employer from his employees shall, until the same is paid to the Village of New Paris, be deemed a trust fund in the hands of such employer. Each employer shall be liable for the payment of the tax required to be deducted and withheld, whether or not such tax in fact has been withheld. F, any person who is required to withhold tax from qualifying wages shall pay all such tax to the Village of New Paris in accordance with the provisions of this section. In the event taxes withheld from the qualifying wages of employees are not paid to the Village of New Paris in accordance with the provisions of this section, all officers, members, managers, employees, and trustees having control or supervision of or charged with the responsibility of filing the return and making payment are jointly and severely personally liable for the tax not returned or paid to the Village of New Paris, as well as any related interest and penalties, and are also liable under the provisions of Section 12 thereof. The dissolution, termination, or bankruptcy of a corporation, limited liability company, or business trust does not discharge an officer's, members, manager's, employees, or trustees' liability for a failure of this corporation, limited liability company, or business trust to file returns or pay said taxes. G, withholding the return, list of employees. Each employer shall file a withholding tax reconciliation, showing, right? Showing the sum total of all compensation paid, all employees, compensation paid to all employees, the portion of which, if any, was not subject to withholding along with an explanation or saying, and the portion of which was subject to withholding, together with the amount of such withholdings remitted. Such return shall include information concerning each employee from whom the municipal tax was withheld, showing the same, showing the name, address, zip code, and social security number of each and such employee, the amount, the total amount of compensation paid during the year, and the amount of municipal tax withheld. If the total tax withheld from any employee includes tax withheld and remitted to another municipality, the amount of same shall be separately shown on the return of information to be built, on the return of information to the Village of New Paris concerning each employee. The withholding tax reconciliation shall be filed by each employer on or before February twenty eighth, following the end of such calendar year. H, in addition to the wage reporting requirements of this section, any person required by the Internal Revenue Service to report on Form 1099-MISC, miscellaneous payments to individuals not treated as employees for services performed shall also report such payments to the Village of New Paris when the services were performed in the Village of New Paris. The information to be submitted on a listing and shall include the name, address, and social security number, or federal identification number, and the amount of the payments made. Federal form or forms 1099 may be submitted and lose such listing. The information shall be filed annually on or before February twenty eighth, following the end of such calendar year. High domestic servants, no person shall be required to withhold the tax on the qualifying wages, commissions, other compensation, and other taxable income paid domestic servants employed exclusively in or about such persons' residence. However, such domestic servants shall be responsible for filing and paying their home returns and taxes. Section 7, declarations. A, requirement for filing. Every person who anticipates any taxable income which is not subject to Section 6 or who engages in any business, profession, enterprise, or activity subject to the tax imposed by Section 3 shall file a declaration setting for such estimated income or the estimated profit or loss from such business activity together with the estimated tax due thereon, if any, provided, however, if a person's income is wholly from qualifying wages from which the tax will be withheld and remitted to the Village of New Paris in accordance with Section 6 hereof, or the estimated tax due is two hundred dollars or less, lest such person need not file a declaration, being dates for filing. Such declaration shall be filed on or before April fifteenth of each year during the life of this ordinance or on or before the fifteenth day of the fourth month following the date the taxpayer becomes subject to tax for the first time. Two, those taxpayers having a fiscal year or period differing from the calendar year shall file a declaration on or before the fifteenth day of the fourth month following the start of each fiscal year or period. C, forms, credit for tax withheld or paid to another municipality. One, such declaration shall be filed upon a form furnished by or obtainable from the tax administrator on an acceptable generic form, and credit shall be taken for the municipal tax to be withheld from any portion of such income. In accordance with the provisions of Section 6, credit may be taken for tax to be withheld and remitted to another taxing municipality. Two, taxpayers who are individuals, such declaration of estimated tax to be paid, the Village of New Paris shall be accompanied by a payment of at least twenty-five percent of the estimated annual tax and at least a similar amount shall be paid on or before the last day of the seventh, tenth, and thirteenth months after the beginning of the taxable year. Three, for taxpayers that are not individuals, such as such declaration of estimated tax to be paid, the Village of New Paris shall be accompanied by a payment of at least twenty-five percent of the estimated annual tax, and at least a similar amount shall be paid on or before the fifteenth day of the sixth, ninth, and twelfth months after the beginning of the taxable year. Four, the mere submission, submission of a declaration estimating a tax liability shall not constitute filing unless accompanied by the required payment. D, amended declaration. One, a declaration may be amended at any time. Two, in the event that an amended declaration has been filed, the unpaid balance shown due thereon shall be paid in equal installments on or before the remaining payment dates. E, annual return required on or before the fifteenth day of the fourth month of the calendar or fiscal year, and the annual return shall be filed, and any balance which may be due, the Village of New Paris shall be paid therewith in accordance with the provisions of Section 5. Section 8, appointment and duties of tax administrator. A, one, it shall be the duty of the tax administrator to collect, to collect and receive the tax imposed by this ordinance in the manner prescribed therein, to keep an accurate record thereof, and to report all money so received. Two, it shall be the duty of the tax administrator to enforce payment of all income taxes owing the Village of New Paris, to keep accurate records for a minimum of seven years, showing the amount due from each taxpayer required to file a declaration or make any return, including their return of taxes withheld, and to show the dates and amounts of payments thereof. B, the tax administrator is hereby charged with the enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance, including the interpretation and enforcement of the rules and regulations set forth in Article I through Article seventeen. It is hereby empowered, subject to the approval of the village and council, to adopt, to promul- promul- say again, probably, yep, and to enforce rules and regulations relating to any matter or thing pertaining to this collection of taxes, and the administration and enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance, including provisions for the reexamination and correction of returns. C, in any case where a taxpayer has failed to file a return or has filed a return which does not show the proper amount of tax due, the tax administrator may determine the amount of tax appearing to be due, the Village of New Paris, from the taxpayer, and may send to such taxpayer a written statement showing the amount of tax so determined, together with interest and penalties thereon, if any. D, subject to the consent of the majority of the board of review, the tax administrator shall have the power to compromise any liability imposed by this ordinance. E, upon the demonstration and documentation of good cause, the tax administrator shall have the power to compromise penalty and interest liabilities imposed by this ordinance consistent with this ordinance and the rules and regulations. A, Section 9, investigating powers of tax administrator, penalty for divulging confidential information. A, the tax administrator or any of his authorized agents is hereby authorized to determine the books, papers, records, and federal income tax returns of any employer, taxpayer, or any person subject to or who the tax administrator believes is subject to the provisions of this ordinance or for the purpose of very verifying the accuracy of any return made, or if no return was made, to ascertain the tax or withholdings due upon this ordinance. Every such employer, supposed employer, taxpayer, or supposed taxpayer is hereby directed and required to furnish upon written request of the tax administrator for his duly authorized agent or employee. This the means, facilities, and opportunities for making such examinations and investigations as are hereby authorized. B, the tax administrator is hereby authorized to order any person presumed to have knowledge of the facts to appear at the office of the tax administrator and to determine till and to examine such person under oath concerning any income which was or should have been reported for taxation or withheld, or any transaction tending to affect such income, and for this purpose may compel, and the production of books, papers, records, and federal income tax returns, and the attendance of all persons before him, whether as parties or witnesses, whenever he believes such as persons have knowledge of such income or information pertinent to such inquiry. C, the refusal to produce books, papers, records, or federal income tax returns, or the refusal to submit to such examination by an employer or person subject to or presumed to be subject to the tax or by any officer, agent, or employee of a person subject to the tax or required to withhold that, or the failure of any person to comply with the provisions of this section or with an order or subpoena of the tax administrator authorized hereby, shall be deemed a violation of this ordinance punishable as provided in Section 12. D, every taxpayer shall retain all records necessary to compute his tax liability for a period of seven years from the date of his return is filed for the taxes required. B, L, R, A, E, any information gained as a result of the tax, investigations, hearings, or verifications required or authorized by this ordinance shall be confidential, and no person shall disclose such information except in accordance with a proper judicial order or in connection with the performance of that person's official duties or the official business of the municipal corporation as authorized by this ordinance. The tax administrator of the municipal corporation may furnish copies of returns filed under this ordinance to the Internal Revenue Service and to the State Tax Commission. F, any person divulging such information shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the first degree, punishable by a maximum fine of one thousand dollars, or imprisonment, or not more than six months, or both. G, in addition to the above, penalty, any employee of the Village of New Paris who violates the provisions of this section relative to the disclosure of confidential information shall be guilty of an offense punishable by immediate dismissal. Section 10, interest and penalties. A, all taxes imposed and monies withheld are required to be withheld by employers under the provisions of this ordinance, and remaining unpaid after they become due shall vary interest at the rate of one percent per month, a fraction thereof. B, in addition to interest as provided in paragraph A hereof, penalties are hereby imposed as follows. One, for failure to pay taxes due, other and taxes withheld, ten percent of unpaid taxes. Two, for failure to remit taxes withheld or required to be withheld from employees, five percent per month or a fraction thereof. Three, whether the taxpayer has failed to file a declaration on which he has estimated and paid a tax equal to or greater than the tax paid for the previous year or where he has filed a previous return, and has failed to file a declaration on which he has estimated and paid tax equal to or greater than the ninety percent of the actual tax for the year, or has failed to file a return and paid the total tax on or before the end of the month following the end of the taxable year, ten percent of the difference between ninety percent and the actual tax for the year and their amount paid through withholding the declaration. Four, any person required to file a return as set forth in this ordinance who fails to file said return as set forth herein shall pay a late filing fee of twenty-five dollars if said return is filed no more than thirty days past its due date. In the event said return is filed more than thirty days past its due date, said person shall pay a late filing fee of fifty dollars. It shall be no difference, it shall be no defense in the payment of such penalty that no tax shall be due to be paid to the Village of New Paris or that a refund is due to be paid to the taxpayer as a result of the filing of such return. C, exemptions, exceptions. A penalty shall not be assessed on an additional tax assessment made by the tax administrator when its return has been filed in good faith and the tax paid thereon within the time prescribed by the tax administrator, and provided further that in the absence of fraud, neither penalty nor interest shall be assessed on any additional tax assessment resulting from a federal audit, providing, providing an amended return is filed and the additional tax is paid within three months after the final determination of the federal tax liability. D, upon recommendation of the tax administrator, the board of review may abate penalty, interest, and/or the late filing fee, or upon an appeal through refusal of the tax administrator to recommend abatement of the penalty, interest, and/or the late filing fee concerning an item of income or expense the board made, nevertheless, abate penalty, interest, and/or the late filing fee. The tax administrator is hereby given the authority to abate any of the penalties imposed by, by this section upon request, upon written request of the taxpayer and subject to the provisions of this section. Such abatement is authorized whether in full or in part. Tax administrator may promptly, promptly, say again, yep. Rules and regulations governing the abatement of penalties. Section 11, collection of unpaid taxes and refunds of overpayments. A, all taxes imposed by this order shall be collectible together with any interest and penalties thereon by civil action at law. No additional assessment shall be made after three years from the time the tax was due or the return was filed, whichever is later provided. However, there shall be no period of limitation on an additional assessment in the case of a return that omits gross income in excess of twenty-five percent of that required to be reported, or in the case of filing a false or fraudulent return with the intent to evade the tax, or in the case of failure to file a return, in those cases in which the commissioner of internal revenue and the taxpayer have executed a waiver of the federal statute of limitations, the period within which an additional assessment may be made by the tax administrator shall be extended one year from the time of the final determination of the federal tax liability. B, taxes erroneously paid shall not be refunded unless a claim or refund is made within three years from the date on which such payment was made or the return was due or within three months after the final determination of the federal tax liability, whichever is later. C, interest shall be allowed and paid on any overpayment by a taxpayer or any municipal income tax obligation from the date of the overpayment with the following exception: no interest shall be allowed on any overpayment that is refunded within ninety days after the fi- final filing date of the annual return of ninety days after the complete return is filed, whichever is later. For purposes of computing and payment of interest on overpayments, no amount of tax for any taxable year shall be treated as having been paid before the date on which the tax return for that year was due without regard to any extension of time for filing that return. The interest shall be paid at the rate of interest prescribed by Ohio Reinsurance Code 5703.417. Amounts of less than five dollars shall Amounts of less than five dollars shall not be collected or refunded. Section twelve, Violations and Penalties. A. Any person who shall, one, fail, neglect, or refuse to make any return or declarations required by this ordinance, or, two, knowingly make an incomplete, false, or fraudulent return, or, three, willfully fail, neglect, or refuse to pay the tax penalties or interest imposed by this ordinance, or, four, willfully fail, neglect, or refuse to withhold the tax from his employees and remit such withholdings tax to the tax administrator, or, five, refuse to permit the tax administrator or any duly authorized agent or employee to determine his or his employer's books, records, papers, or federal income tax returns, or, six, fail to appear before the tax administrator and to produce his or his employer's books, records, papers, or federal income tax returns upon, or, subpoena of the tax administrator, or, seven, refuse to disclose to the tax administrator any information with respect to such persons or such persons' employer's income or net profits, or, eight, willfully give to an employer by an employee false information as to his true name, correct social security number, and residence address, or the failure of such employee to promptly, promptly notify an employer of new change in residence address and date thereof, or, not failure on the part of any employer to maintain proper records of employees' residence addresses, total wages paid in municipal tax withheld, or to knowingly give the tax administrator false information, or, ten, fail to comply with the provisions of this ordinance, or any order or subpoena of the tax administrator, or, eleven, willfully fail or willfully refuse to make any payment on the estimated tax for any year or part of any tax year as required by section seven, or, twelve, fail to cause the tax withheld from the qualifying wages of the employees pursuant to this ordinance to be paid to the village of New Paris in accordance with the provisions of section six, or, thirteen, attempt to do anything, whatever, to avoid the payment of the whole or any part of the tax. Penalties or interest imposed by this ordinance shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the first degree and shall be fined not more than one thousand dollars, or imprisoned not more than six months, or both, for each offense. B. Statute of Limitations. One, civil actions to recover municipal income taxes and penalties and interest on municipal income tax shall be brought within three years after the tax was due or the return was filed, whichever is latter. Two, prosecutions for an offense made punishable under this ordinance shall be commenced within three years after commission of the offense, provided that in the case of fraud, failure to file a return, where the omission of twenty-five percent or more, uh, more, more of income required to be reported, prosecutions may be commenced within six years after the commission of the offense, ORC seven-one-eight-point-one-twelve. C. Failure of any employer, taxpayer, or person to receive or procure a return, declaration or other required form shall not excuse him from making any information, return, or declaration from filing such form, or from paying the tax. Seven, the term "person" as used in this section shall, in addition to the meaning prescribed in section two, include, in the case of an association or corporation not having any partner, member, or officer within the village of New Paris, any employee or agent of such association or corporation who can be found within the corporate limits of the village of New Paris. Section thirteen, Board of Review. A. A Board of Review consisting of three members to be appointed by the mayor and approved by the council is hereby created and shall be maintained in hereafter. The members of the Board of the Review shall be appointed for a term of three years; however, the members of the first Board of the Review shall be appointed for one, two, and three years respectively. A majority of the members of the Board shall constitute a quorum. The Board shall adopt its own procedural rules and shall keep a record of its transactions. Any hearing by the Board shall be conducted privately, and the provisions of this section nine, with reference to the confidential character of information required to be disclosed by the ordinance, shall apply to such matters as may be heard before the Board on appeal. None, all rules and regulations and amendments or changes thereto which are adopted by the village administrator under the authority conferred by this ordinance must be approved by the village council before the same become effective. After such approval, such rules, regulations, amendments, and changes shall be filed with the Council and shall be open to public inspection. The Board shall hear and pass on appeals from any ruling or decision of the tax administrator, and at the request of the taxpayer or tax administrator is empowered to substitute alternate methods of apportionment. C. Whatever the tax administrator issues a decision regarding an income tax obligation that is subject to appeal as provided in this section or in an ordinance or regulation of the village of New Paris, the tax administrator shall notify the taxpayer in writing at the same time of the taxpayer's right to appeal the decision and, uh, and of the manner in which the taxpayer may appeal the decision. None, any person who has agreed by a decision by the tax administrator and who has filed with the village of New Paris the required returns or other documents pertaining to the municipal income tax obligation that issue in the decision may appeal the decision to the Board of Review by filing a request with the Board. The request shall be in writing, shall state the particularity why the decision should be deemed incorrect or unlawful, and shall be filed within thirty days after the tax administrator has issued the decision. E. The imposition or of the penalty and interest as prescribed in the code of ordinance of the village of New Paris is not a solid basis for appeal. F. The Board of Review shall schedule a hearing within forty-five days after receiving the request unless the taxpayer waives a hearing. If the taxpayer does not waive the hearing, the taxpayer may appear before the Board and may be represented by an attorney at law, certified public accountant, or other representative. G. The Board may affirm, reverse, or modify the tax administrator's decision or any part of that decision. The Board shall issue a decision on the appeal within ninety days after the Board's final hearing on the appeal, and send notice to its final decision by ordinary mail to all the parties to the appeal within fifteen days after issuing decision. The taxpayer or the tax administrator may appeal the Board's decision as provided in section five-seven-one-seven-point-zero-one-one of the Ohio Revise Code. H. Each Board of Review creating pursuant to this section shall adopt rules governing its procedures and shall keep a record of its transactions. Such records are not public records available for inspection under section one-four-nine-point-four-three of the Ohio Revise Code. Hearings requested by a taxpayer before a Board of Review created pursuant to this section are not meetings of a public body subject to section one-two-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revise Code. I. Vacancies on said Board shall be filled by appointment by the mayor, subject to confirmation by council, and shall be for the unexpired term of the Board member replaced. All terms shall begin on January first and end on December thirty-first of their appropriate year. All appointments and confirmations thereof shall state the date of beginning and ending of the term for which the appointment is made, calculated as accordance with this section. Members of the Board shall receive no compensation, but shall be allowed such amounts for actual expenses, including but not limited to mileage as council may provide. Section fourteen, Application of Funds. The funds collected under the provisions of this ordinance shall be deposited and received in the general fund income tax account and shall be appropriated by the village council as follows. A. For the costs and expenses of collecting the taxes levied by this ordinance and the costs of administering and enforcing the provisions thereof, such part of said funds as may be necessary. B. The balance remaining in the income tax account shall be applied, apportioned, and transferred by village council by and in its annual budget in such appro- pro- pro- portions, portions, portions. Portions as council may at time, from time to time, determine and authorize. Section fifteen, Credit or Tax Paid to Another Municipality or Joint Economic Development District is adj. A. Limitation. Effective with the date of this ordinance and each year thereafter where a resident of the village of New Paris is subject to municipal income tax imposed by another municipality, shall be allowed a credit against the tax imposed by this chapter in the amount of the tax so paid by him or in his behalf to such other municipality not to exceed one-half of one percent. B. Credit to Residents. Effective with the date of this ordinance and each year thereafter, every individual taxpayer who resides in the village of New Paris who receives net profits, salaries, wages, commissions, or other personal service compensation for work done or services performed or rendered outside the village of New Paris and pays a municipal income tax on the same income tax by the village of New Paris to another municipality, shall be allowed a credit against the tax imposed by this chapter in the amount of the tax so paid by him or in his behalf to such other municipality not to exceed one-half of one percent. C. Credit to Residents. Effective the date of this ordinance and each year thereafter, every individual taxpayer who resides in the village of New Paris who receives net profits, salaries, wages, commissions, or other personal service compensation for work done or services performed or rendered outside of the village of New Paris and pays a joint economic development district tax as a result of a joint economic development zone created under section seven-one-five-point-six-nine-one or a joint economic development district created under section seven-one-five-point-seven-oh, seven-one-five-point-seven-one, or seven-one-five-point-seven-two of the Ohio Revise Code, shall be allowed a credit against the tax imposed by this chapter in the amount of the tax so paid by him or in his behalf to such other joint economic development zone or district not to exceed one-half of one percent. D. Credit to Residents. Effective with the date of this ordinance and each year thereafter, every individual taxpayer who resides in the village of New Paris who receives net profits, salaries, wages, commissions, or other personal service compensation for work done or services performed or rendered outside of the village of New Paris and pays a county income tax on the same income tax by the village of New Paris to another county, shall be allowed a credit against the tax imposed by this chapter in the amount of the tax so paid by him or in his behalf to such other county not to exceed one-half of one percent. D. Except as provided in provision E of this section, the tax withholding is paid to a municipal corporation on income tax or wages, and if a second municipal corporation imposes a tax on that income or wages after the time for refund of the tax or withholding paid to the first municipal corporation, the second municipal corporation shall allow a non-refundable credit against the tax or withholding a second municipality claims is due with respect to such income or wages equal to the tax or withholding paid to the first municipal corporation with respect to such income or wages not to exceed one-half of one percent. E. If the tax rate in the second municipal corporation is less than the tax rate in the first municipal corporation, then the credit described in division D of this section shall be calculated using the tax rate in effect in the second municipal corporation not to exceed one-half of one percent. F. Effective with the date of this ordinance and the year and each year thereafter, claim or refund or credit authorized under this ordinance shall be made in such manner as the tax administrator may by regulation provided in section sixteen, Requirements for Joint Economic Development Districts, adj. Specific provisions of this ordinance may be modified as they apply to joint economic development districts if the modifications are passed by council in an ordinance which either specifically approves a joint economic development district contract or specifically advances this ordinance. Seventeen, Saving Clause. This ordinance shall not apply to any person, firm, or corporation, or to any property as to whom or which it is beyond the power of council to impose the tax herein provided for. Any sentence clause, section, or part of this ordinance, or any tax against or exception granted to any individual or any of the several groups of persons or forms of income specified herein is found to be unconstitutional or illegal or invalid, such unconstitutionality, illegality, illegally, say it, yeah, or individuality, shall affect only such clause, sentence, section, or part of this ordinance, and shall not affect or impair any of the remaining provisions, sentences, clauses, sections, or other parts of this ordinance, as is hereby declared to be the intention of the council of the village of New Paris that this ordinance would have been adopted had such unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid sentences or farther of not been included herein. Section eighteen, Collection of Taxes. After termination of ordinance. D. This ordinance and model income tax ordinance two-eleven-oh-five shall continue effective insofar as the levy of taxes is concerned until repealed, and so in far as the collection of taxes levied hereunder in actions or proceedings or for collecting any tax, so levy or enforcing any provisions of this ordinance are concerned, it shall continue effective until all of said taxes levied hereunder are fully paid, and any and all suits and prosecutions for the collection of said taxes or for their punishment or violations of this section shall have been fully terminated, subject to the limitations contained in section eleven and twelve thereof. The annual returns due for all or any part of the last affected year of this ordinance shall be due the date provided in sections five and six of this ordinance as go the same or continuing. Section nineteen, Emergency Clause. This ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety, and shall go into effect forthwith. The reason for said emergency is the immediate necessity of levying the tax provided herein in order to provide funds for the purposes of general municipal operations, maintenance, equipment, and the extension and enlargement of municipal services and facilities and capital improvements of the village of New Paris, Ohio, during the year two thousand and eleven and thereafter. So reads the second reading. Now, I would like to go ahead and do the third reading. I would like permission from the council to do this by paragraph number.
Tyle Ollman.
Tyle Ollman.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Chris.
Yeah.
Deanna Abrams.
Yeah.
Paul Hollins.
Yes.
Jean Davies.
No.
Jennifer Barlow.
Yes.
Rick Benwick.
Yes.
Mary Jean.
Yes.
Third reading, Village of New Paris, Tax Ordinance Number two-eleven-dash-oh-five. Levying a tax to provide funds for the purposes of general municipal operation, maintenance of equipment, extension, enlargement, and improvement of municipal services and facilities and capital improvements on all salaries, qualifying wages, commissions, and other compensations earned or received by residents of the village of New Paris on all salaries, qualifying wages, commissions, and other compensation earned or received by nonresidents of the village of New Paris for work done or services performed or rendered in the village of New Paris on the net profits earned on all businesses, professions, or other activities conducted by residents of the village of New Paris, on the net profits earned on all businesses, professions, or other activities conducted in the village of New Paris by nonresidents, and on the net profits earned by all corporations doing business in the village of New Paris as a result of work done or services performed or rendered in the village of New Paris requiring the filing of returns and furnishings of information by the employers, and all those subject to said tax imposing on employers the duty of collecting the taxes at the source and paying the same to the village of New Paris provided for the administration collection and enforcement of said tax declaring violation thereof to be a misdemeanor and imposing penalties thereof. I need a motion to accept Tax Ordinance Number two-eleven-dash-oh-five.
Southbound.
Is there a second?
I'll open up for any decision from the audience. If you can't decide what you want to do, I think next you'd be able to make that voice.
I'll do that before we take a vote.
How can you sit there and think you're doing the best interest of the people of New Paris in general, but then this, how can you think that?
Well.
You're the one that really wants this.
I'm the one?
Yeah.
No, we all do. We, we have been cut.
You stand with me.
We have- We've been cut 25 percent from the state this year. We're going to receive another 25 percent from the state next year. That's 50 percent of our budget.
There's one more thing.
How do you propose that we keep in operation?
How do you propose in a woman like me, my social security is frozen for three years.
Social Security is not affected by this.
I mean, if I have business owners, it will be.
If you work or collect a paycheck somewhere, then you will be an income tax. If it's social security, or retirement, or...
Disability.
Disability, or any of those, it is not affected by this tax. It's only if you work and draw a paycheck, or if you make earnings.
I'm self-employed. Have to be, my check is $380,000.
And your bottom line, whatever your bottom line is after your deductions is what your taxes will be based on. If it's, for instance, if it's $30,000, it'd be $300.
I think you guys need to run this like a woman in the household. We have a budget, we fit to it.
And if they're cutting 50 percent of our budget, you know, how are we supposed to maintain the services that everybody expects without...
Cut back on some of them.
Which one would you like to cut back on?
Well, if I'm in there, I might take 10 percent wage debt, should that help a lot.
We haven't received a paycheck raise in three or four years.
But you're still here.
We are still here, because we're looking for the future.
Out of our pockets, we have a business. No pension for business, is there? People will eat, son, I can't...
Just because the town needs more money, that is no reason to tax the people in town than I'm letting anymore.
Well, do you have any other suggestions?
No, I don't.
About how we can come up with...
Well, just while we're on the paper there, we could, you don't have to have 5,000 street lights a hundred and twenty-five.
I agree with you there.
Here's the problem, Don.
We don't have to have seven days a week, 24-hour day police protection, knock it down a little bit.
We don't have...
You're already 56 percent on your gas credit this first week in June. He's going to go over anyway, just one more night to pay him, bull. For the rest of them, you know, you just go through...
We're going to have to pay this tax.
We have to cut back, as taxpaying citizens here, we own property, we have to cut back. The town needs to cut back.
I agree with that.
Cut back, whatever it is.
Let the police walk a little bit, maybe help a little. Park the cars.
That'd be the answer.
They did park, but we were standing up for our rights about merging the trash and the water, they parked cruisers, we paid the police, we're sitting down at the desk. They would respond in an emergency thing, but look at other things, we'd be like little kids, we're going to take away the TV because you didn't do what we want you to do, take away the leak rigs, yada, yada.
Ask Reba over here.
You're not going to be...
You're going to drive businesses out of comparison, so that's exactly what you're going to do.
Dwight, I don't know how to rebound anything else, but if this town's going to survive, what do you propose we do when the state's cutting us 50 percent of our budget?
What is...
You want no...
If they cut taxes like we do.
You want no, you want no police protection? You want those services in the...what don't you want? What are you going to eliminate? I mean, our hands is tied, we don't want to do this anymore than anybody else does, but tell us how we're going to operate this village.
One thing I think, and if the lights get out on the police department...
Well, here's the thing, we cut back on the lights, Donnie, we looked at that. BP&L, we have a contract BP&L for $15,000 a year running lights. They said, turn them off if you want to, you still owe us $15,000. So how do you propose we do it?
You should be doing it about two years.
Well, we signed one about two years ago, it's every seven years, there's about five or four years left on that contract, so we, our contract, we go out here and turn them all off, but they're still owing us their $15,000.
Where are we spending all of our money? Even though you say we don't have any, where are we spending what we don't have?
Well, stop and think about how much the gas is...
And I sat there for a few years, figure it out, where are we spending our money?
Where did you spend your money when you had extra money? Where did you spend your money when you had extra? What did you do with it?
Hey, there was still money in there whenever we were...
Not my question. What did you do with the extra money you had when you were in there? Did you invest any of it in there, or did you do nothing and let it sit there?
It was still there when I left, and the next council suspended it.
The gases went up so high.
For sure.
Just like gas for you, our gas is the same price, we don't get it this time.
And nobody puts gas in my car, Cooper. You know, I get the paper and read up for people who don't...
I have to pay it too, I have to pay it.
I pay everybody. I make some to me.
What are our bills? What are our highest city bills? Tell me something, give me a...come on.
Well, the police department has bought 125,000.
25,000. 25,000. Okay, look to the next one.
And well, you got all your, you got all your, you got your street lights, you got everything above, you got your employees, you got what's limited employees you have, and then you got all your insurances that you've got to meet and all the requirements by the state that you've got to meet, it all adds up.
I mean, I see a real broken down list of that, but I don't wish our police budget was 145,000 dollars, send it like the highest one on the bunch.
Well, these are all right here. Let's see, the lady back here have a question.
We don't need her.
I just moved back here.
Two or three hours a day.
Wait a minute, Donnie, she's got four.
I collected a lot of information, I've been home for like 20 years, I just got back here, and it doesn't look good.
It doesn't look good anywhere.
No, it's, everything has changed so much.
We've also lost another 10,000 because of gas pertains due to all the municipalities, because they felt they wasn't getting their fair share. We went to the Supreme Court, we lost.
We lost 40,000 on that.
Exactly. Last year, last year, the state came in and said, we need more money, they came in and took 12,000 out of our budget.
They moved the state...
So what are you supposed to do?
How much is this tax you guys are thinking about, or you supposedly think it's going to generate?
Well, we had Mr. McDougal come in from Hamilton County, who would do the tax collecting, he collects this for most villages, even a whole lot of villages around that tax at fault. By the way, most, we're one of the few remaining villages that doesn't have an income tax. So they, he come in and took, they base on population, so he come in and based population when he had to times like 14, 50, or whatever it was at the time, this is like two years ago, and he throws out a number, and he thinks it's going to generate like $137,000. Now, I told him I didn't agree with that figure, because we had so many retirees and everything in this town, I did, those numbers are not going to be accurate. So we were hoping that if we could get a third of that, you know, if we could get somewhere around $60,000, $60,000 is more than what we generate off of the levies that we bring before you now, and if this income tax will generate that, our hope is, when those levies come due, is not to put them levies back to, before the people again, we won't need them. But 60,000 is more than what we generate now.
If you give them money, though, you're going to start spending more money, though.
Right.
That's what's going to happen, it always happens.
We're only hoping to survive, that's all we're...
They want to go out and incorporate and all that, there'll be more cruisers, more police, more everything. And I mean, it's smaller, it's better than larger than you afford.
Well, if you want no police protection, um...
I'm going to ball back.
Good luck with that theory, but the sheriff's department is going to take a 50 percent hit, just like we're taking a 50 percent hit too. Last year it got down to where they had one patrolman at night to cover the whole county. I hope that you don't have to make a dire call in the middle of the night and wait for two days for them to show up, because that's what you're headed for. I mean, you got to have, and this cesspool out here in the world ain't getting no better, it's only getting worse.
Well, we got a cesspool within our government.
I don't disagree, but what do you propose we do?
We're going to minimize about that.
What do you propose we do? Nobody likes this thing better than anybody else.
I never heard of any...
How do you propose to survive? How do you propose to survive?
Chief, is there any way you can shut your budget down a little bit?
We're not doing training now. We're not doing training now.
Well, you've got a lot of extra.
We don't have extra. We have $5,000 left over.
No, I don't need extra money, money, I mean, you've got so many different police.
We do?
Don't you?
We got two.
Aren't they volunteers?
Yeah, well, I'm only full-time, the rest of them are part-time, one of them...
Because I hear different...
There's two part-time, Jean.
I hear different call numbers on a scanner.
Those are dog ears, guys.
They're different part-time, saying they're working for nothing, but the cruisers are running constantly.
Yeah, yeah, and then you have uniforms, you have the...
Insurance, you probably, for the other people. It's just too much.
That was the litters running all the way.
And that's what I'm getting at, can you do away with all them clock timers? And have one man per days and one man per nights?
If you want to do that, I'll walk away from it, because I'm going to handle everything myself.
There'll be other chiefs. I mean, that's my theory. I mean, I'm trying to think of a way to save some money, and...
If you like the town, if you want to move, since your contract, I don't think that's a good thing, but...
I mean, you know, it's kind of like you, you have a lot of different fellows on the radio that I can't hardly keep up with. I hear a new number and I'll put it down, then I'll try to figure out who he is, and I know we're not hiring them, but there are volunteers, volunteers take gas money and uniform money, and a little bit of this and a little bit of that, pretty soon you got it. Now, that's my theory.
The 60,000 you're talking about, that is making is roughly one-third of police.
Our budget, our budget is what, 60, 69,000 dollars of our budget from the state, and they're going to cut that 50 percent, so you're going to be down to $30,000 to pay your bills with, when the light bill itself is 15,000. So that leaves you 15,000 to do everything else in this village for the year. How do you propose to do that?
So then, so then if you put this tax in, and you just got that challenge, we're only going to generate 60,000, so then we got $75,000 total according to you...
This is an additional 60,000, Donnie.
And that is not even half of what we got to pay the police department.
Donnie, you've got to figure the 60...
I'm taking your figures you just given.
All right, you want me to answer you now? Or you just want to keep rambling?
Go ahead.
60,000 of this, this supposedly, and we're dealing with unknown figures here until we know exactly how many people is working and everything else, but we estimate 60,000. That 60,000 would be plus the remaining 50 percent of what we get now from the state. Without that 60,000, you're going to be operating on $30,000, plus whatever you generate from the levies. And as the levies come up, and we present them, they've just turned down five times in a row, and the next ones are turned down, where are you going to be?
Just because these other small villages like New Madison, they got it, I don't think they got the sales tax, they got the income tax, but just because West, West Oak, some of these others do that, does that mean we have to follow in line?
No, we're not trying to follow any line, we're trying to survive.
That's what I'm trying to do, too.
We're trying to survive.
Mr. Carlotta. You guys say you've got a contract with BP&L, it's such a ironclad contract, you can't claim the word survivable, to break it or modify it. We tried to, nobody calls back when you need to get a...Mr. Amy coming, I mean...
Well, that's fine, now you want to go into litigation, and where do you propose we come up with the money to pay for this litigation?
What about this new electric company, because we're getting all this mail from...
I got some connected.
Yeah, we're, you know, they bought out BP&L. Yeah, they're wanting to cut into BP&L.
That don't have anything to do with it, we're in a contract with them.
Check in.
So if we break the contract...
Why don't we, why don't somebody on this board call on this, on this new company and say, hey, can you break our contract and we'll go with you for half the price we're going through BP&L, you know?
We did that last year.
Try something, huh?
We did that last year, we got to touch one to find out if we could get out of this if possible, turn off half our streetlights.
Governor Lord Ray.
They said no hope.
That new company may, or BP&L said it?
That's what BP&L said, it was under contract.
Well, that's the same taxes you guys use, they're all back with, you know, and watering the trash, you don't use the...
Now you're going to have everybody turn off their electricity.
Water necessarily, you don't have to use the trash, you will pay, it's a bunch of crap.
You pay now for the trash, don't you?
I kept mine to the lady's bill.
How much is the total town, how much is the total town levying?
What is it? Can you stall?
231.
Well, anyway, back to Mr. Vanmaercham, from my experience when people claim survivable, that you should be able to at least reopen negotiations on this light contract.
You're better off putting my beer.
I mean, you're in emergency, quickly, you're...
We'll give you an opportunity, we'll have to try.
You don't need help here.
Back up, call Mr. Washington, ask him to...
You got it.
It was like an emergency, sound growing, I mean, towns and streets and towns...
Everybody...
Tell them about it.
Economies.
I know, water and sewage.
Yeah.
I thought it was very determined, or move determined, or something.
Well, this is all coming from upstairs, the big shop's up there, it's raining down a little bit.
Yeah, the state's cutting, but states saying, stand on your own.
I'm just taking away, they already...
Well, if they want to take all our money, we could.
That ordinance will ever solve, it'll cause more static to bullshit than my health.
Well, we get it anyway, it don't make any difference.
Get it from who?
Everybody.
We just...
We've been here before, your daughter's been here before, Mr. Carlotta's here every week, why do you have to get in here?
I've never been here with you, Sharon.
I think you have.
No.
Hey, maybe I'm wrong.
It doesn't matter, we've asked people, we're here to help us, we don't get any...
234,000, 235,000, roughly. So 235,000, roughly 140,000 of that, over half is for our police department, cruisers and maintenance and... No, no, that's just general fund. A general fund, okay. That's general fund.
Well, what do we pay on insurance? I mean, we pay 100 percent of their insurance, huh?
Hold on.
Now, that's a savings.
Hold on.
Okay, you ran over me that last time on that.
This is revenue, this is...
You have three employees taking insurance. You have three employees that are insured. You have three employees that are insured.
That's too many on 100 percent.
Oh, come on, Jean.
Nobody ever makes 100 percent on their insurance. Do you pay your insurance, your employees' insurance?
I did.
100 percent of it?
85 percent of it.
Well...
I'll tell you.
Can't we do that with our police department?
Your police department, no, man.
You're not paying insurance on him.
I do.
On police chief.
Not on our police...
You're not paying no insurance on police chief.
You couldn't afford to, because it's already over half the thing.
He's covering it with 20 percent insurance. You got Jeff and Moose.
It'd be hard to get in.
No, no, no policeman gets their insurance paid.
No.
Okay, I'll throw him on that.
No. Go ahead, go ahead, take a break, go ahead and take a break, we'll come right back. Hurry up.
And I mean, anywhere you can save 15, 20 dollars, a half dozen dollars, it's going to amount to something.
You're going to...
And I have good insurance, forever I'm here.
We do that, so he's not going to...
We're starting off with half a week. Everybody's entitled to their own pay, we're going to do what we've got to do.
Okay, that's all, we'll come to town.
Then we'll give three.
Five. Not taxes, you're... Yeah, can. Can.
Why, you want to go dancing tonight? You want to go dancing tonight?
Boy, you want to do...
I have to go, it's like a...
You never forgot that.
I've never forgot that.
Yeah, that'd be...
Hey, I was asking if you want to go dancing tonight, I want to know if that's... I got, I got the biggest kick out of that, I don't know where I get it.
I was passing, I was...
I work in, I work in, I got me on here this street, so I'm paying both.
But I have on my seat, and I think it's fine.
Everybody's getting that.
But they don't pass one of the wages.
They do mine.
They got wage freedom, they can make it, but...
They don't pay us, they don't pay us, they cut on the wages. They haven't got any wages, they haven't raised at all. 10 percent, they got 70, 60,000 dollars, we need at least 70,000 dollars, they got 4,000, 4,000, and the rest are all parked out. Well, that's a different thing, that's a whole separate issue, it's like the fire department, uh, versus... They'll help us. They'll be moving out of these... A lot of people live in high school, they ain't got no jobs, they need jobs. And all the others, eight dollar an hour job, they can't afford house, or gas, food, eight dollars an hour. Can't do it. Especially for the rest of them.
I know, I just... All of them.
There's a fence, or there was a fence, you know, behind your lawn. There's a hill back there.
Well, there we have another town. You might as well buy that, that's like three and a half, he comes there.
Yeah, that's fair. Well, you know, when Dana moved out, I wanted a job there. They have to help things out. Jack, they interest rate up so high. I was...
We got that, that was funny.
We all...
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 Let's get to it.
Everybody back.
We're really good.
I understand that.
I understand that.
That's what I wanted to understand, what they should be.
That's okay. It's all you got.
If you have any questions, please.
I talked to her.
We're supposed to go?
Now, they're gonna have to go.
I'll check those, send them my last.
You better find your...
That's right.
Jane wants you.
We're going, we're going back in session now.
Joe, Jean, you need to...
Put anything you can do on there.
Hard make this insurance.
Okay, we'll do that.
I got thirsty.
And my baby's already going to bed.
This is a good position.
I'm gonna go.
Somebody gave me one.
Okay.
You gave me...
Joe, we need to get back in session.
I gotta... I gotta stand, is that right?
Yeah, okay. Okay. Is there any other special? All right.
We lost some people.
Then, I need the motion to accept. Tax ordinance number two thousand eleven dash oh five.
You have a motion to accept.
From Mary Jane, she made the motion to accept.
Second.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Joe Barto.
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle.
Yes.
Earl Mullins.
Yes.
Dean Davies.
No.
Dallas Sabres.
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas.
So order is passed.
Neil.
Now I need, well, just a second. Now I need a motion to make the City of Hamilton our tax collector.
Our what?
The collector of the tax, tax administrator.
I make a motion, we make the city or the, what do you call it?
City of Hamilton. Tax administrator.
Tax, I can straighten it.
Second. The second by Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call.
Earl Mullins.
Yes.
Rick Van Winkle.
Yes.
Joe Barto.
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas.
Yes.
Dean Davies.
Yes.
Dallas Sabres.
Yes. Rick, is there anything else that needs to be... Suzie.
Did you pass this as an emergency?
No.
Did you read the three readings?
No.
We read it three times.
You read it three times?
Absolutely.
In the same time, so it is...
No.
Right now?
It is in effect.
It is in effect, so essentially you declared the emergency?
No.
You read it three times, you've got the emergency clause in it?
Yes.
So technically it would be considered an emergency?
No.
We read it three times, Suzie.
You read it three times, you read by... Okay.
We did it required by all three readings.
Okay. I was just curious as to what you were doing.
Clause was in there, but we didn't do it that way.
I don't know why that... The motion, say, that is in there. What is this stuff?
As in most orders are.
And when is this going to be back?
Light first.
It...
All right, okay. How you know how the employees, one of our employers...
First of all, we have to contact them, the city of Hamilton will be notified, it'll take them thirty days or so to get their paperwork and get everything with the computer program and get everything set up, and then they will go from there. It'll be done as we will.
Anybody ever really sit down and went through our finances, what we had to operate with? You kind of wonder how we do it so far.
I understand your point.
They should cut us. I mean, we got...
I don't, we've done everything that we possibly can.
Exactly.
After a while, you have a recent point where you gotta do what you gotta do. Okay, next on the agenda, Jane, you said a few...